There we go.
Andy, this is April. Under the agenda review, I would like to request, I did notice that our current agenda does not include a second non-public session after the meet of our meeting. And I would like to respectfully request that we do give 15 minutes for the public to be able to respond to any information they may learn tonight. Thank you.
Yep, I agree. I was actually going to bring that up. I think, yeah. Is everybody okay with that? I see nodding.
That's fine.
So yeah, we'll do that right before non-public.
Thank you, Andy.
Patty, did you have anything?
I do not. Thank you.
All right. So then agenda item number three is minutes. We have two of them, three of them tonight. So do people have corrections or do we want to take them as a group?
And this is April. I have a correction for the date of 119. On page four, under number seven, it states, Mrs. Filani stated that last year, the board did not vote on each resolution or give general guidance. The board actually did give a general guidance, but we did not vote. So I would just like to, that, the minutes to reflect that the past board gave general guidance, not voting on each resolution, please.
Sandy's giving a thumbs up. Any other corrections on 119? Okay, is there a motion to approve as amended?
This is April. I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for 119, 2021, as amended.
Amy, second.
Thank you. If there's no further discussion, then on roll call vote, April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
And I'm yes. So 119 is good to go. Corrections on 125 or 22?
I'll make a motion to approve 125 and 22.
This is April. I'll second the motion.
All right. One last call for discussion. All right, then on a roll call vote to approve the minutes, January 25th and February 2nd. Try to go the other way. Amy?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Okay, so moving on. Agenda item number four is our first public comment section. Quick reminder, try to have a three-minute time limit. I will keep track on my phone. Please be as brief as you can in case there are a number of people that want to contribute. We'll try to keep as close to 15 minutes as we can. We do have a number of people on the phones tonight. If you're on the phones, just hold tight. When we get to 12 or 13 minutes in and we don't see hands, I will ask you if you want to contribute and you can unmute yourself by hitting star six. So if you're on the phone and you want to chip in, just wait until I call for it and then unmute yourself. Give me your name and I'll recognize you. Anybody else, go ahead and use the raise hand button that you should be able to find somewhere in your WebEx tool here. And I will try to recognize you. I think it actually puts them in order automatically now, which is great. So with that, the first one I see is Melanie, come out. Melanie, go right ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi. Melanie Camello for South Brownin Court. I just wanted to bring to light, as I'm sure you guys know, the new CDC guidance strategy for K through 12 schools that was released February 12. In it, it states underneath indicators of community transmission, the CDC recommends the use of two meters of community burden to determine the level of risk of transmission, the total number of new cases per 100,000 people in the past seven days, and the percentage of nucleic acid amplification test results that are positive during the last seven days. In the past couple of weeks, Pembroke has been adding more new daily cases of COVID-19 than the city of Concord has. Five days ago, NHPR put up a COVID update that had the communities with the highest rates of COVID active cases adjusted for population include Plymouth, Wyndham, Salem, Durham, and Pembroke. The problem is, we don't have a college here. We don't have a correctional facility here and we don't have a long-term care nursing facility here. In the CDC guidance that just came out, they also state, "To enable schools to open safely and remain open, it's important to adopt and consistently implement actions to slow the spread of COVID-19, both in schools and the community. This means that all community members, students, families, teachers, and school staff should take actions to protect themselves and others where they live, work, learn, and play. In short, success in preventing the introduction and subsequent transmission of COVID-19 in schools is connected to and facilitated by preventing transmission in the broader community." In the guidance, it states, actually throughout the whole guidance, that the two biggest things to prioritize for mitigation strategies is universal and correct use of masks at all levels of community transmission. It also states, "Physical distancing at least six feet should be maximized to the greatest extent possible. To ensure physical distancing, schools should establish policies and implement structural interventions to promote physical distance of at least six feet between people." I'm assuming that the cases that are announced from the schools stating that there is a case, but there's been no exposure, is because we are maintaining six feet of social distancing. My question is, is if we decide to reduce the distance to three feet or zero feet, are we going to still be able to say that there's been no exposure? The other thing that I wanted to-
15 seconds, Melanie.
Yep, is that it does say in here that families of students who are at increased risk or live with somebody with increased risk should be given the option of virtual instruction, no matter what learning method is being used. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Tim Girardi. The floor is yours.
Evening, everyone. First, I didn't see it explicitly called out on the agenda, but I'm hoping that we can dive into some of the survey that was sent out, I believe, a week or so ago. At least maybe some preliminary results if you don't have everything prepared. But I am anxious to hear about the results of the, of that survey. Also, you know, again, you know, hoping that the survey is a step in the right direction for us to get the students back into the classroom. You know, we've been talking about this for a while now and hopefully we have good information tonight to help us get the students where they belong, in the classroom. You know, I've been, I'm sure many have seen, a proponent of two modes to help us finish out the school year. Full remote option, full in-class option. Hopefully, we can get some information. And I am glad also that we are including a second comment section. When I did see that, I was going to ask why we didn't have a second. I do like having that so folks can participate and comment back against information delivered. So thank you for, for doing that. And lastly, I'll just say that I'm very, very thrilled with the level of participation tonight. I don't think we've seen a, a board meeting with over 100 folks on it in a while. So hopefully, it lends itself to some good commentary, good conversation. And again, working to get our children back into the school in some capacity for the balance of this year. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Looks like we got one more. Scott Tibbetto.
Hi, good evening. My name is Scott Tibbetto and I'm a teacher at Pembroke Academy and the vice president of the Education Association of Pembroke. I am speaking to you tonight in support of forestalling a traditional full-in-person return in the interest of the health and safety of our students and staff. The association is open, however, to exploring possible alternative options that will still ensure that social distancing is maintained. The association understands and agrees that there is a negative impact on students only being able to access face-to-face learning in the limited fashion that hybrid affords. However, compromising the protection of social distancing outlined by the CDC as imperative to containing the spread of COVID-19 and safely keeping schools open is an unacceptable risk for our community to take. Per the new CDC guidance, universal proper masking, frequent hand washing, and physical distancing of six feet or more to the greatest extent possible, even in the low and moderate transmission zones, are all necessary to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Should the board choose to go full in person, the mitigation strategies as outlined by the administration to keep distancing in place are both logistically and financially prohibitive and, in our opinion, would not be conducive to providing the high-quality educational experience that our students have come to expect. This change would also undoubtedly compel students who are happily able to access in-person learning to move into a full-remote setting, denying them the face-to-face instruction they were afforded in the hybrid model. Though there are schools in the surrounding area, namely Bo, Hooksett, and Epsom, they have attempted a full-in-person return. Those schools have had to pivot between learning models several times this year, which negates the consistency of a learning model we are trying to establish for our students in these unprecedented times. Recent events have shown us that COVID is a very real danger in our schools and should be treated as such. We have a Pembroke Academy faculty member who, verified through contact tracing and her doctor, contracted COVID at school in mid-November before the holiday spike and became hospitalized in critical condition. Thankfully, this person recovered. However, they are currently too ill to return to the building and are out on medical leave indefinitely. This story could have had a much graver ending and our students and staff were very nearly mourning the death of a beloved colleague and teacher. The staff member contracted the virus while we were in hybrid model and the likelihood of someone contracting the virus at school increases with more people in the buildings. If during your deliberations tonight, you were able to find a better avenue to increase face-to-face instructional hours than the current hybrid model while keeping social distancing in place, we would be more than happy to work with you and the administration in implementing that vision. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. I don't see any other hands. So again, if you're on the phone, you should be able to unmute yourself by hitting star six. I should be able to see you unmute, but after you do, just go ahead and state your name if you want to contribute to public comment. I'll give it 30 seconds or so. Okay, seeing none, then we will move on to agenda item number five, consent agenda. Patty, do you have anything for us? Got one?
Yes, we have one staff leave request and it is pretty straightforward. Doesn't require a non-public session unless someone had a particular interest in doing so.
Okay.
This is Amy. I'd like to approve the staff request and congratulations.
Great motion to approve. Did everybody hear that? Amy was more choppy. Hold on, I think we might have some people not muted here.
Andy, I didn't hear a second.
Okay.
Do you want me to re-
Please.
My audio is first. I make a motion to approve the leave request.
This is Ann. I'll second.
Thanks, Eddie. Okay, then on a roll call vote to approve the leave request, Amy?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
April?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thank you. Then we will move on to agenda item number six, media business, where we will discuss the school instructional model. Couple of bullet points here. We'll take a look at the matrix. We'll talk about some possible adjustments to the hybrid model and we'll take a look at the latest plan that the administration has come up with for a full, a possible full return. So I'll ask the board quickly, do you guys want to each give a quick kind of status update on, on where you're at before we turn it over to Patty? Or do we want to dive right into what, what they want to share with us? No? Okay. I would turn it over to Patty then and we'll see what kind of work they've been doing.
Okay, I think we'll start with the matrix and just briefly review the updated numbers. So we used our traditional matrix. There is a new matrix in the CDC guidelines that we're interested in taking a look at to compare to what we currently have. Our data right now, from our original grid, uses county data. So we're thinking about looking more in the community of Pembroke. But for now, for tonight, we're going to use our traditional matrix. The Merrimack County per 100,000 cases is 273.3 right now. Town of Pembroke active cases currently is 16. Positive COVID results in our schools, PA is three active, Three Rivers is three active, and Hill School is one active. I'm just waiting for one update on the tracking sheet that the nurses provide and I will put that in the drive so you have all the up-to-date numbers, both for the month of February and then from the beginning of the school year. We didn't change any of the highlights in our different columns between hybrid and remote. The availability of cleaning supplies is still fine and our compliance with mask wearing is still generally fine. And I also updated the rest of the counties in the state on the second page. Questions on the matrix before we move on?
Anybody have questions?
This is Amy. I'm playing with my audio. Is this any better? Okay. Patty, did I hear you correctly say that you were going to transition away from looking at county data? I thought reading the new CDC guidance, it referenced county data.
It does reference county data and it also references community data. So we're interested in kind of taking a look at the CDC guidelines because their matrix is a little bit different than ours. So I didn't do anything with that information tonight. I just wanted to mention that that's something that we're going to take a look at.
Any other questions about the matrix or the data presented? Okay.
Okay. So initially, we had planned, we were asked to take a deeper look at the hybrid learning model and see if we could come up with some alternatives to the current way that that has been structured. Initially, we're going to just sort of throw out some bullet points and then we had a conversation about the fact that it may be helpful to do a new document like you've been familiar with seeing and also make that available to the community and to the board so that instead of just hearing the information, you can refer back to it at a later date. And we added a little bit more information. So this newest document is instructional model updates for the 2021 school year with today's date on it. So by way of introduction, the, as most of you, if not all of you know, the Pembroke School District Staff and Administration have been consistently reviewing our learning models since our schools were required to close in March of 2020. We began this year with a comprehensive reentry plan that followed the guidance from the New Hampshire Governor's Office, the CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics, Department of Ed, Department of Health and Human Services. You, as we just reviewed, we developed a decision-making matrix that has assisted the board when making decisions about our learning models. And then in December of 2020, we were, we presented you with our plan for a full return. That was the plan with the three columns that talked about maintaining six feet of social distancing, three feet, and then what it would look like if everyone were in with no social distancing. So I'm sure that you've heard on the news, the topic of reopening schools has been a national and state conversation. But we wanted to make sure that you remember that while we're in a hybrid model, that our Pembroke schools are open. A lot of those conversations revolved around schools who have students that haven't stepped in the building in almost a year. So we just want to remind people that we have been open. And as a matter of fact, the alternating schedules that we call the hybrid model, the CDC considers that a medium risk in their matrix that they use. So the CDC guidelines were released in the afternoon, pardon me, of February 12 on Friday afternoon. So we did a little bit of pivoting over the weekend and today to try to prepare for this meeting. The principals are going to go step by step and walk you through their thoughts and information that, that we've put together. We have a link to the CDC guidelines in the document that I'm referring to that we have tonight. We'll post that on the website for the public. And then we also will post the U.S. Department of Education guidelines that they released on the same day. So as a reminder also, our students in the, in the Pembroke School District are in very different buildings. We have very different needs, different space. And we do take into consideration all those factors when we're making decisions and we do look at this on a school-by-school basis. We want to thank our staff, our, for the endless times they've worked with us to revise and refine these plans, the countless hours they spent trying to meet the needs of our students. And we also want to make sure that we thank the parents, the guardians, the relatives, the community members for all the sacrifices they've made to join us as partners in educating our students. We don't want to lose sight of that, that, you know, while things have consistently been split down the middle, 50% in favor of one thing and 50% in the other and, and living through a year that not everyone is going to be happy. We still want to acknowledge the partnerships and the community involvement and input and thank everyone for that. So if it's okay with the board, we're going to go school by school and Dan is going to kick us off.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay? All right. Okay, so I just, I'll read the Pembroke Academy portion of this plan and then I can certainly answer any questions after that if you'd like. At the start of semester two, Pembroke Academy developed an attendance protocol using Google Meets that is now a consistent expectation for all academic classes and advisories. In addition to teachers seeing both in-person and remote students every class to facilitate attendance and provide check-ins at the start of class, a recent staff survey indicated that over 80% of PA teachers are live-streaming their instruction at least once a week. And it's important to note that each class meets twice a week for 90 minutes in Pembroke Academy's modified block schedule rather than every day like in many elementary and middle school models. There are some instances where live-streaming instruction is not appropriate when in-person students are using power tools and woodworking, for instance, or caustic chemicals in chemistry. However, with those exceptions withstanding, we are working towards an adoption rate of all teachers live-streaming their classes for direct instruction by March 5th. Pembroke Academy conducted a parent survey, collecting data from 421 parent respondents between last Thursday and this past Sunday night. When asked, "Based on current COVID conditions in our area, which do you prefer for your student?" 60 respondents chose full-remote, 111 respondents chose hybrid, and 250 respondents chose full-in. The survey also asked, "Would you send your student to school if classrooms in the cafeteria were set up with three-feet social distancing?" This question was asked because given, giving a full-in option would require us to use three-foot social distancing in order to accommodate the number of students, especially during lunches. Passing time would also be of concern. When asked, "Would you send your student to school if classrooms in the cafeteria were set up at three-feet social distancing?", 321 respondents said that they would send their student and 100 respondents said that they would access a full-remote option if available. The new CDC guidelines, which came out on Friday, emphasized that six-foot social distancing should be used to the greatest extent possible. The CDC guidelines continue by saying that schools should establish policies and implement structural interventions to promote physical distance of at least six feet between people. Another issue is that out of the 100 respondents who indicated that they would access a full-remote option if available, only 48 respondents have a student who is currently remote. This means that giving the option to go full-in would not only impact our ability to meet CDC guidelines, but would dramatically increase the number of families who would want remote status. Full-remote status is no longer an option as of January 29th because we do not have the capacity in terms of human resources to accommodate more remote students. Pembroke Academy has 101 classes with 19 or more students. As described above, maintaining social distancing with students in a full-in model would be very challenging for us and would raise our risk tolerance considerably, especially during lunches when students eat unmasked. Elementary schools with self-contained classrooms can have students safely eating at their desks. However, there are as many as four students who could sit at any one desk before lunches even occur at a high school with a changing schedule throughout the day. With that said, we do believe that we can safely begin adding more students to our alternating cohort schedule by allowing students to attend every day based on a tiered criterion-referenced approach. For instance, Pembroke Academy has begun to identify seniors who have demonstrated a considerable lack of academic success for the first semester and are now in danger of not graduating. These students will be the first group given the opportunity to attend classes in person every day in order to help them improve their chances for graduation. After this group has been added to our building on an everyday basis, we will reassess our capacity and identify additional groups in a tiered sequence at that point. Is there any questions if you have any?
Thanks very much, board members. Any questions for Dr. Morris?
Can you just repeat the numbers associated with what you anticipate would be the increase in students currently remote versus the number of students that would likely go remote if full-time in school were provided?
Sure. So what is important to note is that we had 421 respondents. We obviously have more students than that. We have approximately 750 students. So our response rate was good considering the accelerated timeline, but it wasn't great. So out of those 421, 100 of those responses indicated that they would choose a full-remote option if available, if we were to go full-in. And out of that 100, 48 of them already have students that are full-remote. Our full-remote numbers are much higher, over double 48. So the point I'm trying to make is that if, if out of that 100, there are 52 more that want to access a full-remote model that they aren't currently accessing, then we could anticipate 100 students given that our full-remote numbers are double anyway.
Any other questions?
Andy, this is Ann. I have a question on the last paragraph where there have been identified as students who would not be able to graduate. So it says, "These students will be the first group given the opportunity to attend class in person." So is that statement, no matter what is voted on tonight?
That's our recommendation. That's what we would do. You know, we're trying to, we're looking at it as kind of a triage approach and that is the demographic of students that represent the greatest need and the greatest urgency. So that would be our recommendation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
But this is Amy. Again, I had another question about the comments about streaming and I apologize if some of my questions repeats what's in the document. I, the way that my day lined up, I didn't get a chance to read this before the meeting. So you mentioned to target live-streaming by March 5th. So is, does this mean, let's say if I was a student and I had to be quarantined for home quarantining for whatever reason, I can still participate in my physics class because my physics teacher will be live-streaming it? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Throughout the year, if a student needs to quarantine, whether that's from exposure, from travel, a travel quarantine, or an elective test, they, they automatically are granted a temporary remote status and they can access their classes remotely during that time. That's been consistent as we've gone through this. So the live-streaming component of that would be that they are accessing direct instruction. And, and that's, that's what they have been doing. I think, you know, the point I'm trying to make there is that we want to be consistent throughout the building that if we're offering direct instruction, that that direct instruction is being livestreamed.
Others? I've got just one, Dan. I just want to be really clear. You know, sometimes when I talk to people after meetings, they're like, oh, I didn't hear that quite the same way as you did. So I, I'm, I wonder if you could answer if this summary I'm about to give is an accurate representation of your recommendation. It seems to me, reading this, the recommendation from Pembroke Academy is based on CDC guidelines that we remain in a hybrid model for the foreseeable future, but that you are offering some enhancements to that hybrid model in, in ideas such as bringing in some higher-risk kids so that they can have more contact with their teachers and more in-person education. Is that a fair summary?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I was understanding correctly. Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on. TRS? Oh, go ahead, Jean.
So Dr. Morris, so if you approximately had 57% respond rate to the survey, leaving out about 320 students. He approximately had fifty-seven percent respond rate to the survey, uh leaving out about three hundred and twenty students. So. If at some point we decide to go full in. What would your remote model look like, given that you're gonna go from, you know, in in the group that responded from forty-eight to a hundred? Add in the other three hundred at the same response rate. Would you be able to maintain remote learning?
I don't think we could. Uh I think if we're looking at, I mean, I I understand that it's an effective strategy to try, you know, try to give everyone what they want, but we don't have the manpower to do that. You know, like if uh if we go full in, that requires more um. More from our teachers in the classroom, not only from an instructional standpoint, but you know, in terms of monitoring social distancing and all of that, it becomes. Uh even more important that those things are um, you know, done with fidelity. But our, I would anticipate that our remote numbers would increase by an additional, you know, seventy to a hundred students based on the survey data we've received. And and we don't have the human capital to do that. Uh so I think that would be very challenging.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other PA questions? Okay, we'll turn it over, Mr. Marston.
Hi, everybody. Uh can you hear me okay? Perfect. Um over the course of the school year, Three Rivers has transitioned from a remote to hybrid when planned as well as when needed. Uh while both models have noticeable differences, the constant has been and is maintaining quality instruction and learning while maintaining the health and safety of our school building. Uh if you can see the document, we did give you some uh numbers uh from that survey and I, if I can, I will just. Um maybe summarize some of those quickly. Um we had a total response of a hundred and ninety-one. We have about three hundred and ten students uh total, so we had a hundred and ninety-one responding. Um currently hybrid, a hundred and forty-six and current remote uh forty-five. Now that's of the hundred and ninety-one. The numbers are higher, obviously, if uh we count the whole building. Uh if social distancing were moved to three feet. The one forty-six that are currently hybrid, uh one twenty-two would go all in and twenty-four would move to remote. Uh if folks are currently remote, thirty-eight would stay remote uh and seven would go all in. Uh where it gets interesting is the last, uh last uh set of numbers. Uh when the question was, I would prefer my child to be six feet apart, which is the current hybrid model. Those numbers then change to ninety-three said no. Uh sixty-seven said yes and thirty-one would still be remote. Uh so in our parent survey, we wanted to gather information regards on how families thinking and feeling the current status of the pandemic. While all the data is important to utilize, the last table was quite telling. The preferences split almost exactly fifty-fifty. Only half of our families that responded. Would want their students to be in the building, all in, and that was ninety-three students. Half of our families want to remain in hybrid or fully remote, ninety-eight students, um when hybrid and remote are added together. Based on the news released from the CDC and with their continued recommendation of maintaining six feet social distancing in conjunction with the parent survey. Moving forward in the second half of the school year, we would recommend the following changes while staying in hybrid model. Uh to amplify and add instructional time and student learning. The first bullet is, um in my opinion, is somewhat significant. Monday, we would schedule as a class day. We would transition Monday from a flex day into a full learning day for all students. Utilizing our remote delayed start schedule, there would be time, still be time for students that need an appointment with a teacher for extra help or services at the start of the day. Then all students would have live sessions with all of their core teachers every Monday. Uh UA teachers on a rotating blue and white basis. Adding additional structure at home independent workdays is also something we need to look at. The structure missing from. The at-home workdays has been a struggle for many students and will help to have all students have a point of contact every day. Students will have the opportunity and/or requirement to log into each of their classes under independent workdays. This will assist in attendance-taking. Uh streamlining instruction and structuring these days to be more productive for students. We're also exploring ways to uh for our most at-risk and educationally needy students to access in-person learning every day, similar to the thought of PA's uh tiered approach. In an all-in model, there'd be also specific challenges. A three-foot uh social distancing requirement would potentially allow us to go all in, go all in. However, busing, lunchtime, unified arts classes would require necessary changes to work. These changes would include parent uh parent transportation, additional spaces. To utilize during large group times and potentially additional duty personnel to cover the added spaces. Following up, what do you got for questions?
Thanks, John. Any questions for John?
Um John, Kate, this is Amy. Can you just describe a little bit on the um, the second bullet? Just some examples of how that differs from what's happening now. I thought that they had to like log in every day and, you know. Say I'm here for attendance-taking purposes by a certain time, so.
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. I think. Yeah, that's correct. Um we're fine, you know, quite honestly, we could do a better job with that. So they they log in by ten o'clock and they fill out a little uh. Attendance thing, uh and that marks our attendance. Uh what we feel we need to do is give a little more structure. I do have some staffs that are interested in um. Uh having uh more of a contact all day long, so every class they would jump into that, the the live class for, I don't know how long. Uh maybe get some instruction, maybe get some, or maybe just observe. Um and to give them a little bit more support um as needed. Um I I think we need to uh pilot that in a couple places first to see if the technology works and if see if. Uh what the uh level of interest is from kids, because right, right now, I would be concerned of students um. You know, from eight o'clock to two-thirty uh sitting in front of that computer all day, I think would lose them. So we're trying to find a balance to do that. Hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions for Mr. Marston? I've got one. I I don't know if this is something that you guys have had the time to look closely at or, you know, reach out to the company or anything, but. I know the new CDC document did talk about busing and did recommend six feet of space on buses, one child per seat alternating. Whether they're sitting on the aisle or in the window and all that stuff. If I reach way back in my memory banks, a school bus, I think, has around twenty-three or twenty-four seats. Have you guys analyzed what that might mean? Um with the numbers coming back from the survey, how many kids, how many people say they would send their kids to school? And then kind of normalized against the entire student population? Do we have any concept of whether or not this would mean additional bus runs? I guess is really what I'm looking for.
Yeah, you know, we haven't uh honestly haven't dug that too deep into it, but um when I spoke with the bus company, they they were pretty sure it would take additional runs. Um some of it depends on whether the community or parents are willing to drive their kids to school. Um we seem to have a lot of folks doing that right now. Um I I think if we were to drill down, we would really have to get a. Really specific information uh from parents to say it's yes or no, you're gonna ride the bus. Um I think you all remember, we only have four bus drivers and we're squeaking through it now. Um and we typically have eight when we have all students back in the building. So that creates quite a, quite a scenario that honestly, I don't, I don't know. I wish I I could say one way or the other, but they have told me that it'd at least be a double run. Um and and uh, you know, possibly a triple run, which would be kind of unattainable, I would think, but. I don't want to speak for them.
Any other questions before we move on to Hill School?
Yeah, I'll have the same question I had for Dr. Morris, for uh Mr. Marston concerning the ability to. Uh use remote learning if the schools are fully open.
Yeah, we're, we're a little bit different than PA. Um you know, just a little background, we uh. Uh teachers teach approximately five blocks a day. Um and currently, um one of those blocks is we've held for remote students. Uh so depending on um how many kids there are, um we have one grade, grade level that is beginning to get too big. So um that one grade alone has thirty-one kids remote learning. So if that, you know, that's a pretty big class. So if we get a little bit higher, you know, we have to make a decision. Do we split that and make two? But then the in-person classes go up too big. So it's, it's really a, a numbers game. So while we could do a remote to a certain point, there is a. There's a point where we just can't sustain it um and keep the balance uh that that's required. I I I do want to point one other thing out um about the remote learning piece. Um and I'm stepping out on a limb here a little bit, so forgive me. But one of our bigger issues with remote learning is, and it's controversial, I guess, but. Most kids are now keeping their camera off. Um and it's really, really challenging. Uh and that's being nice as far as when you go on, you know, I guess. If we all turned our cameras off right now and said, we gotta get this, this meeting done in forty-five minutes, like a class period, how well would that go? Um so that's what teaches our challenge with every day with that uh that scenario. Um and I personally would like to have a little more teeth to have cameras on. But one thing that has changed when we first talked about this was kids now have the ability to change their background. So it doesn't have to be uh to see into their houses. They can blur the back. They can go to the beach. They can go. Uh camping or homeless, different things for background. So it's just something that is is certainly a frustration for all of us. Uh when you go on and you see nothing but icons.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. And we'll move on to Ms. Gary.
Thank you. Um so we spent quite a bit of time thinking about the end of the year um and about, we're obviously elementary is a little bit different. Um so we kind of took a look at what we are calling three different versions or models of of what we could do. Um. Each of these models, I think it's really important that I present this information to you in reference specifically to the data that was collected. Um from parents as well as we really took an in-depth audit of all our available resources in our building. Um and then our goal really is to clarify the benefits and um make note of the constraints of each of these models to help us with those decisions, with that decision-making. So that's my goal tonight is to kind of go through that with you. Making the data and everything a part of the narrative, so you can see how it plays out, because I think one of the challenging things in all of this is. I can give you numbers, I can tell you percentages, I can tell you how many people did all of that, but if we don't know what it looks like on the ground. And in the actual implementation, I think that's where quite a bit of the frustration comes from in why aren't we making these decisions or why aren't we doing this? So I'm hoping to clarify some of that. In regards to what the data means on the ground and in the classrooms and why we could or could not um put something into place. So the first thing I want to talk about real quick is, um the first question that we put out was in your, in um. Based on the current, same one that that uh we had at PNTRS, based on the current COVID conditions in your area, what do you prefer for your students? So this was just a basic. Where is my comfortability level? What is it that I would want um if I had my ultimate choice of everything? Um we had seventy-six com- uh percent completion rate of our survey, which I was very excited about. Um so it's a, to me, a very good representation of where our um families feel that they're at. So full remote, um. We had forty-one chose that they would say full remote. Just to give you an idea, we currently have sixty-five in full remote. Um so we did see that a lot of our full remote families did not uh take this survey. That was one of the area, one of the larger populations that was missing on that. A hundred and thirty-one full in at social distancing and sixty-three would prefer to stay hybrid. Um and. So what does that mean for us, right? What does the implementation of that mean? What that means to me is fifty-six percent of the respondents wanted to be in at three feet, but forty-four percent did not want to be in at three feet. So that's kind of around that same mark we're talking about with fifty-fifty. Um and then we'll get into a little bit detail about how, what that means um in a classroom. So the first, taking that information, um the first model that we've talked about is to continue with our current hybrid with a focus on intervention. Um some of the things that we've talked about with this are we can maintain the six feet social distancing per the CDC guidelines, especially that just um came out. Our cohort models remain in place. For us, our cohorts are are really important. Our kiddos. They eat together, they go to recess together, they're in classes together, they don't cross their cohorts throughout the day. Um and one of the, that's one of the biggest mitigation factors that we have in place in addition to the masking and the social distancing. Um what we want to do and we've started doing with uh success is adding additional students who meet similar strict criteria is based on our intervention processes and. Our benchmark assessments that were in place and we're just wrapping up that uh mid-range round of that. Um up until now, we've really focused on bringing in students with uh within the special education um area and we have some of them that are in four full days a week. We have some that come in for appointments. We have some that are in four full days based on their specific needs. Um what we would like to do is open up and I'll share some numbers with you in a little bit about how many spaces we have in each grade level that we feel we could. Um add additional students to their four, four full days that are not within that special education umbrella, but students that do need more uh instruction or that face-to-face with teachers. Um the other thing. The other thing that we would like to do if in this particular model is to open up Mondays similar to um what uh TRS had talked about providing a little bit more direct instruction on Mondays. Uh with a possible focus on math, since math is one of those areas that we want to really um kind of kick into high gear a little bit and move forward. The work on our literacy collaborative, it's um, it's more of a workshop model. Um it, the, the way the lessons are and everything tend to um. Little bit um easier to handle in a hybrid. We want to kind of kick it into high gear with math. So that would be the first model would be similar to what you've heard. Hybrid right now, maintaining all of that, but really focusing in on bringing additional students into the building that have those more intensive needs. Outside of our special education umbrella, students who were not previously accessing um the building. Uh the other piece, sorry, the other piece that too is. Um bringing students in on Mondays, we've already started identifying students that need additional support on Mondays. We've spoken to the bus company and identified windows of time that we could bring them in for additional support to work with um paraprofessionals as well to uh. Get just more additional assistance on all of that. Um so we have all of those details with this model worked out. Um the second model that we took, we took a look at was three feet all in. Um and. Just to kind of go into the survey data on this, the first question was if we went to three feet, what would you prefer? Um this particular question, it's, it's important to know, it takes the hybrid model of six feet off the table. So it's asking everyone to choose between if we went to three feet. What it would be. A hundred and sixty-six chose um full in and sixty-nine chose full remote. We have sixty-five currently in full remote and as I already mentioned, similar to what PA said. We, the smallest population that responded to our survey was remote. So a large portion of these, um I'll talk about that, um about half of them are parents who would want. To go remote if three feet was the only other option. Um we were able to parse out that information also by asking a couple more questions that were unique a little bit, which is um. If social distancing measures were changed to three feet, which model will you prefer? What we did was we took a look at the respondents that were currently in hybrid. So the question where it asks you to look at what's hybrid. So these are the people who are currently in hybrid. And we said, and we wanted to know what they chose. In this case, it would be a hundred and fifty-seven would want to stay full in, but of the ones that are currently hybrid. Thirty-six would want to go full remote. Um so that's in addition to our sixty-five, you know, the, the sixty-five that we already have um in our full remote. Um sorry, I apologize. I have a dog that just decided to come visit me. Um so. That's really important to note that that's thirty-six. Now, if we look at it in terms of an elementary classroom, this is again on the ground what we're really looking at. Thirty-six is two classrooms worth of students, but it doesn't work out to be two classrooms. It's spread across grade levels. So we have. Six in first grade, ten in fourth, nine in kinder, five in second and six in third. None of those numbers allow us to free up a teacher to then go remote. Because we still would not be within the limits of the actual class size um in that. So that's kind of where. Those numbers, when you look at them as a whole, speak one way, but when you look at them and you really pull it apart on the ground, it's a little bit different. Um another interesting fact too was we looked at anyone who was currently remote, um asked them the same question. Uh full in or remote. We had nine that actually said they would come back for full in. Um and then thirty-three that would maintain full remote. So roughly about twenty-seven, when you do all of this, wanted to go full remote. That's would prevent us from those twenty-seven. That's would prevent us from those twenty-seven students would then, we don't have a place for them because we don't have access to an additional twenty-seven spots in full remote learning. Um, so as we were going through this, there were a lot of questions we asked ourselves. Can we accommodate the students physically in the building at three feet? The answer is yes, in kinder first and second, no, in fourth grade. I'm currently over three students in fourth grade to be able to accommodate because we had to collapse a fourth grade class at the beginning of the year. That fourth grade teacher became a remote teacher. So we currently have three physical fourth grade classrooms. They would be at, um, o- over the sixteen, it would be sixteen, seventeen and eighteen respectively for those grades. Um, we'd be able to do all the cohort maintaining, um, a concern is the traffic patterns in a classroom. If you're at three feet in a classroom, those kids are pretty much sitting in their desk. Otherwise they're crossing all over each other and they're no longer walking around. Um, you know, the room at, in a safe way, they're, they're crossing within three feet. Um, in the drive, we did place, um, some maps that you could take a look at. We mocked up. We actually had facilities come in and mock up classrooms. They pulled out furniture. We put up desks, um, to see if what we could, um, what we could actually accommodate. Um, so you have maps of the layouts in the drive as well that you could take a look at. Um, some other things we asked ourselves would, uh, can we transport the students? We've talked back and forth with, um, Dale Transportation and the short answer of this is unless we get a large group of parents to commit to transporting their children, at least an additional sixty, because right now we have about fifty percent that utilize the buses. Um, we would be back to double runs. Now, my concern about double runs, it's different with this time is I was able to, uh, we were able to hire staff to watch them in the afternoon outside socially distanced. If I don't, if we're up to sixty students, which is what's on a, a typical bus run, that's putting sixty students in the gym, crossing cohorts. And that's, uh, an area of concern for us. If we don't get that, a large enough group of parents that would be able to transport, we would also then be staggered start and stop times again, um, because it's, it's another rounds again. So we're losing instructional time, um, in that particular, uh, instance. Do we have the staffing was one of the concerns? Yes, we do. We were able to work out our UA schedules. So we would not need to hire and the original plan I put in. Um, we would not need to hire another, uh, long-term sub because one of our, our library teacher did take on the role of our remotes, uh, teacher this year in addition. Um, uh, so we would not need any new additional staff. So that was one, uh, positive when we dug a little bit deeper. Um, and then the final, um, another, just one big constraint about the three-footed is, uh, we would need to order desks and I did contact the furniture companies. It's a six to seven week order timeframe. Um, some of our classrooms currently only have six to seven tables. We've spent years getting rid of desks because in an elementary, you're really looking at collaborative group work. Um, so we have a six to seven week timeframe on getting those desks in. Um, otherwise at, at that point, we wouldn't be able to accommodate everybody in. They'd be sitting at desks at less than three feet. So that was an area that we were looking at. Um, the longer we wait, um, possibly on furniture, the longer the, that time would, um, extend. Then just eating, um, would be three feet in a classroom without a mask. The last model that we took a look at was our half-day kindergarten, um, or kindergarten in first grade, bringing them in, um, halfway through the day, switching them, um, the other half and the, uh, parent response on this was, um, not as it, this was more of a challenge for everybody. So K one combined, I had eighty-two respondents. This was a separate survey that only went up to primary families. Uh, thirty-nine said, no, they would not be able to accommodate. Thirty-five said, yes, they would be able to accommodate. Um, so it, and I got quite a few more emails expressing that this was how difficult this was for families. Um, so in my mind, the K one, uh, half-day, uh, would not be something I'd recommend. There was also the concern, we're not adding any instructional time. We're just adding the, over the course of four days because it would be a fifty-fifty, um, split. So what all of this means is that obviously the decision for this, it's not easy and it's very nuanced. Every choice we offer takes a choice away from somebody else. If we're offering three feet, the parents that want six feet no longer have that choice. Um, a- and that's what the data tells us with that. People have, you know, strong feelings one way that it's not all in or, or all remote. There's in at three and at six and, and there's a, an opinion that I've seen from the data that shows that. Um, and our recommendation is to continue doing similar to what T R, uh, T R S and P A is to continue with the hybrid model for now. Um, and allowing us to, we'll, we would love to bring in more kiddos and really start to focus on, on, um, the needs of the kiddo, the kids outside of special education, uh, across four days and even utilizing Mondays. That's it. I know that was a lot.
Thank you very much. Um, questions about Hill School?
Andy, this is Amy. I have a question just in general. Um, when I was reviewing the CDC guidance, uh, there were some things that I was clear on how what is happening in the Pembroke School District measures up with what's in the guidance. But there were some things like you mentioned, the busing earlier, uh, that I'm not clear. And I don't expect this analysis to have been done for today. And I'm supremely impressed that so much work has been done between the time that the guidance came out and this meeting, and I'm very grateful for that. Um, but is there a plan to sort of do that audit, you know, to say like, okay, we have this new guidance and here's what our current system looks like and here's where we're meeting it or not meeting it?
Is that a general question for everybody or just for, for me? Cause I can, okay. I can say for Hill School, when we went through the new CDC guidance, we felt like this is what we're doing. We really felt like we are meeting the mask mandates. We are, um, the social distancing we're hitting, we're really targeting. It talks about bringing in special education students, looking at your, you know, more, uh, population that needs additional assistance. So for us, when we were looking through them, we felt confident that, you know, in some of the guidance that we might've been lacking previously, this made us like, okay, we're kind of on the right path with that. Um, and helps a little bit with, with our recommendation. We'd like to keep the hybrid model right now, but that's, I know, Hill-specific.
I would say the same is true at, uh, Three Rivers. Once we got that guidance, um, uh, we felt pretty confident that we were, uh, at, at the minimum meeting those standards. And I think what we're trying to lay out tonight actually increases that. Uh, adding that Monday full remote gives definitely a third chance to be with a teacher live, uh, per week for our kiddos. And then we do need to get a little better on those independent days. So I, I feel like we're going to exceed those, uh, those, uh, uh, recommendations. Uh, the busing is going to be the, the tough one. And I have no problem speaking with, uh, the bus company, uh, and Wendy and I can team up on that. Uh, just to really try to get some clarification. I, we're pretty sure we know the answer, but it would be better to get clarification.
Other questions for Hill? Okay, great. Um, that was very helpful. Thank you, everybody. And thank you for all the work to get that accomplished. Patty, did you have anything you wanted to add or, um, Josh?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, just kind of wrap it up and bring it back. Um, so overall, based on the information that's been provided in the current level of transmission in the community, um, the administration feels that we need to, um, request that we stay in hybrid model. We're recommending, um, Friday, April second. And that the changes to the hybrid model will be implemented as, um, our principals have outlined and will still continue, um, to reevaluate those and assuming that the model would be reviewed again by the board on March sixteenth. With that being said, with that recommendation, I just, I feel like I, I need to mention, um, that we were a little bit deflated when the CDC guidelines came out while they make perfect sense and they represent all of the great things that we've put in place. I think it's, oh, I know, Wendy will mind me saying that for the past two weeks, we have been full steam ahead with coming back full-time at Hill School. And we were prepared tonight to say, we can do this. We can do the three feet. You know, Josh was in, the staff did amazing work trying to map this out. Wendy presented the hurdles that we were, we're going to have some stuff that was going to be hard to figure out, but we felt like we could, we could do it. Um, and when you read the CDC, I got CDC guidelines, we, we can't. Um, you know, they're, the level of transmission that Melanie pointed out in the beginning, um, almost puts us in some cases into the full remote zone according to the CDC, um, which is definitely not where we want to be. Um, but we can't ignore statistics, right? We can't ignore our level of transmission in, um, the community of Pembroke and that needs to get better, uh, before we can be in that zone where we can, um, you know, it's, it talks about six feet whenever possible, unless the transmission is in a different zone. And then it talks about six feet being non-negotiable. So, uh, you know, I'm disappointed. I was hoping that we were going to be able to be there, but I, I don't think we're there yet according to the CDC guidelines. Um, and I would, you know, need to remind everyone that we, we had a lot of conversation and negotiation and preparation. And we would sort of need to go back to the negotiating board as well if we were going to recommend lessening the restrictions, um, that the CDC has, has laid out. Um, and on another side note, uh, since John brought it up, it is my full intention, um, to put cameras on for students. Um, now that when we bought the Google Enterprise Suite, uh, one of the best features that I'm so happy about was the ability to change your background. So we need, we no longer need to see your siblings, your parents, what you have for poster on your wall. Um, we're not interested in any of that, but we need to see your face and to know that you're present in class. Um, so we will help any student that needs it, um, to blur their background or put them like John said, at the beach or in the campground, whatever we need. Um, but it, that has been a huge hurdle for us that I think we can now overcome. So that was just an aside. I know we gave you a lot of information. Um, we really wanted this. The reason that we wanted this meeting to focus on this is because we think that the conversation is critical, that we really need to just have dialogue. And if you think of something, ask the principal, is this possible? Have you thought of this? We're really interested in the back and forth, um, conversation if the board is open to that.
Yep, um, that's my intention. I think, Mr. Coughlin, since we've got you here, do you have anything you want to add? I know a lot, the principals mentioned a lot of things that I'm sure you had a hand in working on, but if you have anything you want to add, certainly value your opinion.
I would just say I agree with all of them. Um, we're in constant communication and we're there supporting their needs throughout this, this whole thing. So, um, I would just say I agree with them.
Okay, thanks. Um, so I, I don't know how we want to do this. I, to be perfectly honest, I have uh, prepared some remarks because I've been noodling this around in my head for the past week and a half and wanted to kind of organize my thoughts. But I don't want to monopolize the time either. So if anybody has any questions, anybody on the board has any questions for anybody in the administration, if you want to just, you know, give us a status update of what you're feeling, where you're at. Um, whatever you guys want is fine with me at this point. I think Patty's right. I think an open discussion is, is good. So.
Uh, Andy, this is Ann. I just have a quick question.
Sure.
Um, probably for Patty. So we're talking about six feet, six feet and the CDC guidelines. What about the schools that are already in and only doing three feet? Do they now have to close unless they can do six feet?
I, I certainly would never want to speak to those schools that are doing something different. Um, you know, these came out on Friday afternoon and there absolutely are schools that are doing three feet distancing. And I'm assuming that they're going to have to reassess that plan and determine what level of risk, um, the community is at. I think that our, you know, as discussed earlier, Pembroke unfortunately is in a high positivity rate and a high active case, um, percentage. So that puts us at a disadvantage frankly. If the numbers were better in the community, then I think you could shift away and, um, you know, maybe have that, that mitigation a little lessened, but in our current status, we, we can't do that.
Thank you, Patty. Um, I, just a follow-up question because one of the schools is, um, in Peter Warburton's district with, uh, Epsom. Did he give you any guidance on what he's thinking?
No, not, not yet. Not since Friday afternoon.
Thank you.
Andy, this is April. I would like to hear more discussion about, um, the memorandum of understanding that has been signed with the teachers' union and what restrictions we have based on that current, um, agreement regarding bringing students back into the building. Thank you.
Sure. Um, Patty can probably answer. I, off the top of my head, I know that there was language around, you know, generally following CDC recommendations. I think six feet was actually in there word for word, but I'm not sure. Can Patty, can you clarify that?
I don't have it with me. Um, I have to look it up, but it's, um, essentially if we're going to, that we would follow CDC guidelines. And if we intended on lessening those restrictions, that we would give advance notice and have that conversation, um, with the staff.
Andy, this is April again, just to follow up. Um, does that document, is it only limited to CDC guidelines or guidelines of other entities as well?
I left without it, April. I don't have it in front of me. Um, I know you guys had it in your drive. What, maybe somebody can put their hands on it, but I will also look for it.
Yeah, I'll dig it up.
Thank you. I think that would be very helpful to know what we are bound based on that agreement. Thank you.
I'm going to poke her on the drive and look for that document, but anybody feel free to jump in with any conversation topics.
Um, I have a sort of a sequencing question. Um, I, well, couple of things. Um, and I, I totally agree that, that a robust back and forth conversation on this is what we need to do. Um, so one of the things I wanted to put forward is, I think it's premature now, but I think pretty soon, like inside of two to four meetings, we need to start turning the conversation to the next school year and what the plan is for the next school year. I feel like we have been, um, maybe not like behind the eight ball all year, but like maybe even with it or just ever so slightly out of it. Um, and, and I think we need to be more proactive. Um, in the short term though, with that proactivity in mind, I'm always concerned about like sequencing the next thing and the next thing. And so, um, am I understanding correctly from Patty that maybe next board meeting, we could expect, um, some information about how to adapt the matrix or replace our matrix with what the CDC guidance is. And then a month from now, we would be revisiting the instructional model again. Is that about right?
Yeah, um, yes. So I was talking today to the administration and I think we do need to look at the CDC grid and compare it to what we're using now, um, and then talk about what our, you know, that was put together in the summer when we didn't have the level of guidance that we have now. And I think it's worth taking a look at Pembroke specifically and our county and, and decide, okay, when do we think we're going to fall into the blue zone? Um, and the other zones that the CDC has, has put out there. So yes, I am interested in looking at that.
I can chime in, um, April, I found that document. I will paraphrase the relevant parts. So the section three, uh, and Patty yell at me real fast if I'm saying something I shouldn't. This is, this was,
This is April. Just when you get to that part, would you, instead of paraphrasing, could you please read it word for word so that everyone listening understands what we're obligated to do?
Uh, Andy, one second, before you go ahead. There is a copy that Molly McCrum had sent to Patty to be distributed to the, uh, board during this discussion. It is in the drive.
Oh, maybe that's easier because the one that I have is marked up.
Yeah, um, it's right in the drive. I can, I can read it if you'd like, Andy.
Sure. If you've got it right up there, that'd be great.
Clarify status so nobody has to be, you know, worried about this. My understanding is that this is, uh, entered into enforceable agreement. And at this point, it's a public document. So nobody,
Yeah, I, the only, the only reason I had a question maybe is because the, the one that I was going off of was pre that. Um, it wasn't the final version. So that's why I'm going to let Gene go ahead and read his because he's got the final copy there.
Thanks.
Okay, this is found in section three of the M O A Safe Working Editions, number one. Um, the board agrees that it will not lessen the restrictions and safety protocols set forth in its reopening plan unless recommended by prevailing medical guidance from the CDC, New Hampshire, D H H S and other qualified healthcare consultants or providers. Any material adjustments or amendments to the reopening plan contemplated during or prior to the start of the school year shall be preceded by a reasonable notice to the association and and an opportunity to provide input and impact bargaining to the extent required by law.
Thank you very much, Gene. Um, just as a reminder, can we get the duration of that agreement? Was there an end date set to that agreement?
It was for school year twenty twenty-one.
Thank you very much, Gene. That's very helpful.
Yeah, I think the end date's an important part and kind of ties back into what Amy had kind of alluded to. I do, I do think tonight's not the night, but I do think we need to start having conversations around next school year as well. Um, it, it's my- It's my intention at this moment that we would be back to normal in fall. I don't think anybody can say that for certain. But I think there's already been a slight dip in numbers across the nation with, as the vaccine rollout has sped up in the past month. So that's encouraging. I, I hope that that continues. And I, you know, I think we're all hoping we can still salvage some of this year, but I'm being anything but back in the classroom in the fall is, is not something that I'm even considering right now. Not that it couldn't happen, but, but my intention personally is that we're back to, back to normal in the fall. Other questions, other discussion topics?
I didn't, I don't know if any of the school nurses are on tonight, but I guess I had a question for one of them concerning the increased risk moving from, I, I, obviously there is some sort of increase in risk. I don't know what it is, but moving from six feet to three feet, exposure times, so on and so forth. Any of the nurses on, do you know?
Um, I thought I saw Allison earlier, but I don't see your name in the list. If, if any of our school nurses are on, feel free to unmute yourself and jump in.
I'm on.
Who's that?
Kathy Mayer.
Hey Kathy, go ahead.
Hi, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. Um, so jumping from, I can just give you a brief little, I don't have it in front of me, so I'm just going to give you from memory. From the zero to the six feet is a matter of droplets and how far droplets travel. And the fact that droplets start to fall at about three feet. So from three feet to six feet, the droplets fall where six to 10 feet is probably the safest for droplets. So droplets, meaning whatever's flying out. You know, when you talk, when you, when you sing, when, you know, when you basically breathe, droplets are coming out. And of course masks are meant to protect, but still it can't protect a hundred percent. And so you still have droplets that come out and the idea is that COVID can be transmitted much easier from zero to three feet than from three to six. So three to six is safer than zero to three and six to 10 is safest. Does that help?
Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. That is helpful.
Thank you.
Andy, this is April. Just, um, I'm, I'm wondering if we could also have Mrs. Mayor or another one of the school nurses talk about how if we lessen the distance to three feet or less, how that would impact any, you know, a possible case at school or someone who's been in contact with someone known to have COVID. Does that mean we might face more days with this out of school?
I can answer that if you want.
Sure.
So when we talk about contact tracing, we talk about six foot distance. And in New Hampshire, they use six feet and 10 minutes. CDC tends to go toward the six feet and 15, but New Hampshire Public Health has said that we go by six feet for 10 minutes and those 10 minutes are cumulative minutes. So meaning if you're with from zero to six feet of someone for 10 minutes or more, then you would be required to quarantine if that person is positive. So yes, it would potentially mean more people being quarantined. If you start going into that zero to six foot distance. And there's also the 10 minute factor and that what I mean by cumulative is it could be throughout the whole day. So a minute here, a minute there, if it all adds up to that 10 minutes and you're within that six foot, that is your requirement for, that's the criteria for quarantine.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Mayor.
And, and that would be masked or unmasked, correct?
That is correct. It's irrespective of masks.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks. Um, I guess now's the good time as any. I'll jump in and read what I prepared. I apologize. It's long. I've had a lot of thoughts. But maybe this will help spark some other people's conversation points too. So Sandy, I'll send this to you so it can be included in the minutes if you want. That's really the main reason I typed it up and so that I wouldn't ramble too much. So I wrote this, this document, the ED COVID-19 Handbook, Volume One Strategies for Safely Reopening Elementary and Secondary Schools is in my opinion, the first useful guidance document that we've received. We've gotten previous documents from the federal government and the state government. And they have more or less said you should open schools or you should not open schools. This document's a roadmap. This document says if you have this level of community spread and you use a screening tool before the school day for everybody and this factor and this factor, here's what you should do. I really wish we could have had something like this 10 months ago. It's, it's, it's comprehensive and it's well done. And it takes into account much more data, in my opinion. In, in a summary, in this document of CDC findings, after listing five or six different mitigation strategies, the document says, well, each one of these strategies is important. Emphasis should be placed on the universal and correct wearing of masks and physical distancing. The link, the document has a link in it to the CDC definition of social distancing. To quote that, it says to practice social or physical distancing, stay at least six feet about two arm lengths from other people who are not from your household in both indoor and outdoor spaces. The document goes on to say that district leaders should analyze community data as a first step when talking about reopening schools. The high community transmission is defined by CDC as over 100 cases per 100,000 people. As of February 2nd, Merrimack County was over 300 or over three times as high as the threshold for being in the high designation. And as we heard tonight, it's still at 273 cases per 100,000. Further, as was mentioned, there was an NPR report that put Pembroke in the top community spread areas in the state among college towns. A note to add to that, as this meeting was going on, I got a WMUR alert on my computer here that said Plymouth University, which is in one of the towns in a similar category as we are to community spread, has just announced that they have canceled all in-person classes. All classes are moving to remote and all athletic events have been canceled. Today, the New Hampshire dashboard showed 273 per 100K from Merrimack County, putting it in the substantial spread group, which is the highest group. Every New Hampshire county is currently in this group. For schools that use a screening procedure and fall into the high category, the recommendation in this document is very clear. I quote, K through 12 schools open for hybrid learning or reduced attendance with strict adherence to mitigation strategies, including masking. Physical distancing of six feet or more should be required. The second step, it says, is to require universal masking. I think we're doing well with this one. The third step, it says, is to plan the use of space, specifically, quote, work with educators, facility staff and community leaders to identify sufficient safe space that allows for physical distancing of at least six feet, making adjustments as needed to classroom layouts. It's my understanding that our teachers and administration have worked with our facility staff and have performed such analyses and have concluded that many or most of our spaces cannot meet these requirements. The document then reiterates again, the decision whether to reopen a school or remain open should be based on community transmission rates as a first step. The document also addresses transportation. One of its first recommendations is to open windows on the buses if possible. That's not reasonable for us right now for obvious reasons. It also recommends one student per row. Following this recommendation could mean more bus runs, depending on how many people opted for in-person learning. Under the extracurricular section, it talks about limiting cross-school transfer. This, in my opinion, applies to everyday life at PA and not just sports. PA serves students from many different communities and this simple fact represents a higher level of risk. When people ask, why can Epsom be open and we can't? This is one of the key differences. We bring in students from not only our area schools, but also from Hooks and other towns that we don't have agreements with, but we still take their students on a space available basis. With this new guidance, I'd be hard pressed to endorse or support any plan that involves distancing of less than six feet. As I've said in the past, I do think the elementary may be somewhat different circumstance, being that they have self-contained classrooms and even in grade five, if a remote section that rotates through the classes is feasible, I would consider it. And I think we've heard some consideration of those types of plans tonight. I also want to take a minute to be very clear where my intentions lie. There's a sentiment in the community that certain groups of people are feeling ignored and I sympathize with that. Speaking only for myself, though, this is simply not true. I read every article that's presented to me, even if I find the source to be less than reliable. I read and consider every email that I receive from the community. I make my decisions based on the following factors. Recommendations from the government that are fully presented and based on science. It's clear to me that this document is much more thorough than any previous document that we've received. Two, I use available community spread data that is publicly, publicly available and not disputed. Three, I consider the recommendations of our teachers, administrators, school nurses and facility personnel. They are, after all, the people that we pay to make these types of decisions in the best interest of our students and communities. Four, I consider the sentiment of the community. Five, lastly, I do consider my personal feelings. I don't weigh this the same as the other factors, but I'd be lying if I didn't put myself and my family into the equation somewhat. So what are all of these groups saying? Well, the recommendation from the government in this document clearly states that six feet of social distance should be adhered to. Three feet social distancing is not mentioned a single time in this document. Two, the community spread data still has us in the highest of categories. Three, it sounds as though the administration is diligently planning and working every angle to get our kids back in the building. It also sounds to me like they do not recommend going against the guidance that I've already discussed. I think the recommendation of remaining hybrid, but providing a chance to get our most at-risk students in the buildings every day is a well-thought-out approach that makes a lot of sense. Four, as far as community sentiment, I think that that's a tough target, but I would say it's maybe 50/50. I have definitely heard from a small number of people that urged me to put the schools into a completely remote model. I don't think that that's, that is a very small percentage of people. Of the rest of the community, it's fairly split with a bunch, you know, with a half of them wanting to be full in person and half of them wanting to remain hybrid. Based on the survey results presented here, it does seem like if hybrid were removed, a good number of people would choose to go full in. That would make social distancing even more difficult. And last, my personal feelings, they don't really matter here, but I'll say that forcing students or teachers into a potentially unsafe environment is something that I don't want to be responsible for. I promise it's getting close to the end. So now what about the best of both worlds? I'd like each, I'm sorry. The idea of having full in person for those who want it and full remote for those who want it sounds great. However, there are a couple of major problems. First, we would still be forcing teachers into classrooms with more kids. I work for the state of New Hampshire. The state of New Hampshire, if you're not aware, is probably one of the least flexible employers that there is. Even they have as much of their workforce working from home as possible. As someone who's responsible in a roundabout way for these employees, forcing them into a classroom, into a full classroom does not seem right. Secondly, and probably more importantly, our simple logistics, providing full in-person education for everyone who wants it is basically going back to normal. That means the building operating the way it did, the teachers teaching the way they did. So if we add a remote option on top of that, we are adding extra work. Again, in elementary, there may be some differences, but in middle and high school, you cannot add remote sections of existing classes without significantly increasing the workload of the teacher. The bottom line is an employer should not increase the workload of its employees in a significant fashion without their consent and without proportional increases in pay. If anyone, if anyone has ideas on how we can make both of these models work simultaneously, please email me and let me know. I would legitimately like to hear those and consider them. But let, and also let me be very clear, this is not bowing to the teachers' union. This is about basic respect for your employees and honoring the contracts that you have with them. That's all. Thank you.
I just want to say thanks, Andy. I appreciate the time it takes to collect one's thoughts in that way. So thanks for doing that.
Well, it seemed long, but I promise if I wouldn't have written it down, it would have been longer. So any other thoughts, opinions, questions for the administrator? I think we have to have some sort of plan to move forward from here. I believe the last time that we had a motion on a learning model, it was included in that motion that we would reconsider at this meeting. So I think eventually we need to get to that point.
This is Amy. I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation of instructional model as described in the Pembroke School District Instructional Model Updates 2020 to 2021 School Year dated 2/16/21, which is, in summary, to continue hybrid through Friday, April 2nd, revisiting learning model on March 16th.
I'll second that. Okay, discussion around accepting the recommendation of administration to remain hybrid with some enhancements, we'll say.
This is April. Just, I'd like to know more about in getting this plan ready to present to the school board tonight. If the key players of the EAP have had an opportunity to review that and their feedback about it.
Patty, do you have information on that?
I know that they have, but since I didn't personally have those conversations, if we could just let the building leadership let you know, I, I, through them, I know that there have been conversations, but I'd like to hear it directly from them if that's okay.
Absolutely. We'll start with John.
Start with me, huh? Okay. Yeah, I, I'm on a relatively consistent basis speaking with building representation. And we, we talked about, I know there is, you know, the whole Monday thing is out there, but I, but we, we've spoken and they, I've also polled my staff and they are relatively comfortable going through with what I have proposed tonight. I say relatively because there's some still things out there that we have to work through, but the Monday definitely is something that they are willing to put into place. So I have spoken with them and I do on a regular basis.
Thanks. And I, I wonder if somebody, if anybody can confirm, I believe in the MOU and Gene, I don't know if you still have it up. There was some explicit mention of Mondays, but I believe that was for Pembroke Academy only. Is that correct? I'm seeing this more or less not.
Hey, I don't have it up anymore.
Yeah, I looked at that and I spoke to Patty and I, it was, there was a couple of paragraphs. One was specific for Pembroke Academy on a couple of things. And I think there was a paragraph on three, for three rivers. But three rivers did not include Mondays.
Okay. Any, any questions for Mr. Morrison? All right, Dr. Morris.
There, yeah, there are portions of what I prepared and read tonight that I shared with staff on Monday that didn't include the survey data because we hadn't properly vetted that and gone through it. So it was fragmented, but the basic gist of, you know, for Pembroke Academy, in concert with the other principles, was that we were going to go hybrid with that tiered approach, identifying demographics in a sequential manner.
Thank you. And Wendy?
I don't have anything different to add. A hundred percent of what we do, I always make sure that everybody has a voice into it, the staff, the EAP reps. We run everything by them. It's, sorry, they're in on all of it. A lot of our decision-making, we're trying to preemptively, you know, work with everyone to make sure that what we're doing is in accordance with contracts and things like that. So what we've presented with hybrid and stuff like that, we're all in agreeance on.
Thank you.
Can I just make a point too, that this is Amy. I am comforted in terms of the potential for staff to, you know, be aggrieved at this proposal. I'm comforted that that is less so, given that this proposal is so in line with the new CDC recommendations.
I have to say that when I did go through the new CDC regulations, what I really took was from it was that this was more geared to schools that weren't, that haven't been in school, haven't been in person at all since last March. And a lot of what we went through, like Ms. Gary said, you know, it kind of affirmed what, you know, the administration and the schools have done well this year, as, as well as can be expected this year.
well this year, as well as can be expected this year in a bad situation. So you know, it feels affirming. Yeah, I kind of got the same impression, Jean, that this, it wasn't so much to say, you know, if you're in, if you're in full, you should stop. And I don't think it was so much to say if you're in hybrid, you need to move to full. I think really what it's geared towards is making every effort to get those schools, and there are a lot of them out there that are still a hundred percent remote, to start dipping their toes in. And of course, you know, we've been doing that all year. So you know, like Amy said, I don't know if I would say that we're ahead of the game, but I certainly don't think we're behind either. And this document kind of reassured me too. And, and it, you know, it's just an ongoing tough situation for all of us because regardless of what choice we make, as we all know, there are going to be people that it doesn't work for, and there are going to be people that are unhappy. And, and the most unfortunate part is there are going to be students that it's not the best for them. And that, that to me is the real sad part here, but I honestly think it can't be avoided. I don't think there's a single system that we could choose right now that would work for everybody. And so, like I said, I'm just holding out all the hope I have that the end of August, beginning of September, you know, we're, we're as past this as we can be. It's just tough. Any other discussion? We do have a motion on the floor and seconded. Okay. Hearing none, then I will call the question. So there's a motion to accept the recommendation of administration to remain in hybrid. I believe Patty, was there a date in that recommendation? Was it April two?
Yes, that's correct.
Oh, I'm getting, I'm getting a choppy hand signal from Sandy. I don't know what she's trying to tell me.
Sorry, I thought it was April twelve.
I think it's four two. Let me double check.
It's the second.
Okay. So Amy, that was part of the recommendation. Is that part of your motion? I just want to be clear.
Yes, and also part of the motion is that the instructional model would be revisited at the March sixteenth board meeting.
Okay, so let me try to do this justice here. The motion is to accept the recommendation of the administration to remain in the hybrid model until four two, with that decision to be revisited at the March sixteenth meeting, and to expect implementation of certain enhancements to the hybrid model to increase.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
That's okay.
I, I would prefer, and the way that I tried to make my motion was as written in this document.
Okay, let me get back there. I am off of that screen. That makes sense.
So the name of the document is the Pembroke School District Instructional Model Updates twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year dated two sixteen twenty-one.
And you're going off of the, the paragraph on the very last page?
Yes.
Okay, so let's try this one more time. There is a motion on the floor to accept the recommendation of administration, which reads, based upon all the information that has been provided in the current level of transmission in the community, it is the recommendation of the administration that the Pembroke School District remain in a hybrid learning model in each of our schools through Friday, April second. The changes to the hybrid model will be implemented as outlined above, and those changes will be reevaluated by the administration on a regular basis. Further, the learning model will be reviewed by the board at their March sixteenth meeting. On a roll call vote, Jean.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Amy.
Yes.
Anne.
No.
And I'm yes. The motion carries. Let's see, before we, I guess before we move on the agenda, does anybody have any last comments on this being that it is the main topic of our meeting tonight?
I had a comment, which is, I'm, I'm curious about the extent to which our administrators feel like, you know, racial and ethnic minorities are the students that are struggling the most. And, and how much of an issue that is in our school district? And is there anything additional that we need to do to solve that problem? Or is the targeted approach called for in this plan we just approved sufficient?
Patty or administrators, anybody want to tackle that?
Well, as you know, in our, you know, in our community, it's pretty disproportionate to begin with. But that is something that we consistently do look at, and our tiered approach, we're, we're taking all those factors into consideration, including mental health needs, you know, socialization. So it's not just academics and it's not just one category of student. We are absolutely looking at the whole student.
Thank you.
Any others before we move on? Okay, thank you all. I will, I'll just add one quick note that we are going to add another public comment section here just in just a couple of moments. But certainly, we've got one hundred and twenty-six people on the call tonight. I'd love to, every, I think we'd all love to hear from you via email as to this plan, as to the new CDC guidelines and everything like that. We're here to represent you, so certainly send us your feedback. With that, we'll move to agenda item number seven, which is informational items. Patty, do we have anything?
I do not.
Okay, then we will go ahead and insert a second public comment section. We will aim for fifteen minutes again, same guidelines as before. I'll get my timer ready. Now you can go ahead and start raising your hands. If I can find that app here. Okay, so again, we'll go through hands, find the raise hand button if you want to contribute. And at the end, towards the end of the fifteen, I will check in with the phone lines as well. So I see Steve and Tammy Boucher. Go right ahead.
Hi, thank you for adding this final public comment section. A couple of thoughts. I continue to not really understand why you're asking and sending out surveys when the results are ignored. You can say it's to get information, but the results to each and every survey have been the same. They have not changed. I also want to comment that as a parent of a senior, I find it very offensive when Amy says that we need to start looking for next year and what's going to happen next year. This year's senior class has actually been the most affected by COVID because they missed everything since March on all of this year. And if we don't go back at all, which is what it sure seems like from the board's discussion, they will never have been with their senior class at all this year. And finally, I also took offense to Dr. Morris's plan for having some seniors who are failing and may not pass coming back. I know that many seniors and actually other students that are simply not engaging remotely, and in fact, aren't doing their work at all. Well, I'm sure there are some students who are actually struggling with the remote form of learning, which has not been the best. There are others who have simply chosen not to participate. And I don't think these students should reward, be rewarded by going back. How about rewarding the students that have struggled and worked hard and are doing well with being able to go back and finish their Pembroke Academy education? Thank you.
Thanks, Tammy. I see Tim Girardi. You've got the floor.
Thanks, Andy. So similar to Tammy, I mean, I'm, I'm definitely a little frustrated with with tonight's events. I need to absorb more and think through, you know, kind of, kind of my thoughts, and I will be reaching out after this. You know, from every school I've heard, there are folks that want to fall in, you know. Steve and Tammy, I mean, those are the folks that I listen to, that I hear, that I want to represent. And it, we have an underserved part of our community. One thing that I haven't heard, and I would urge folks to look at this in the administration, how do we have teachers teaching live in the classroom, simultaneously teaching folks remote? Get the technology into the classroom, webcams, laptops. Let the teachers interact with those in the, in the classroom and remote. Let's redefine hybrid. Let's get this to five days a week. We have to push for this. And as you mentioned, and that's one of the things that I'm thinking through, listening to, and as I'm digesting over the past few days, the new CDC guidelines, is it's not a suggestion to move from where we are, right? It is, it is more, how do we get folks out of full remote? How do we take what has been transmitted to everybody through the CDC? Know that that's the minimum, but we need to do more as a community, right? We need, we need to really get students into the classroom. I empathize with, with Steve and Tammy, and I empathize with, with everyone, the folks that I'm hearing who have to pay for childcare, who have to figure out how they're going to pay for childcare. I really urge to look at every single option. And can we do this with the teacher, teaching the students in the classroom? Giving technology to help them teach and help folks remote in the same simultaneous setting. I really urge us to look at this again and come back and, and see how we can do this responsibly, because I really believe there's a way. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim. Next, we've got Scott Tippodoggin.
Hi, Andy. I just wanted to clarify, our staff member who was hospitalized has actually returned to remote teaching, so she is actually teaching from outside of the building at this point.
Thanks, Scott. A couple more hands. James Gammon.
Greetings. Just in some of the, I only caught the tail end of the, the meeting, but some of the things I gathered was, you know, the, the talk of COVID, the talk of the CDC and the recommendations that CDC makes for school openings, et cetera. One of the things that I don't think was taken into account, based on the short period of time that I was listening to everyone talk, was the amount of cases that are actually existent in the cities that we cover. There are not a lot of cases in New Hampshire. New Hampshire tends to be very blessed in that particular scenario. I, I've had COVID, been, had, over it, moved on. Second thing, the CDC does make a recommendation to open the schools. Exposure to any type of germs at this point is not going to be that bad. The CDC's, I don't see why we're not letting these kids go back to school because there is no real recommendation to not open the school. It's actually they're making recommendations to open the school. And the numbers that they're talking about having such strict guidelines for are for the places like California who have three million cases. We've only got sixty in the whole state that have been recorded since we started this. People in this state tend to take care of themselves. They listen to what the doctors tell them. Why we're holding back at this point, I can't quite see the reasoning for it. And the, you know, worrying about something that we have a ninety-nine percent chance of fighting off, which is a better percent than most flus that we get on a yearly basis. It's, it's worry, worrisome. And the children tend to be the ones that are least likely to get this. I think we stand more chances of problems with the social breakdowns that is occurring with these children's mental health and with their overall state of being. Coming out of this, we need to get them back together. We need to have socialization. It's going to happen. And eventually, we're just going to have to get over it. The vaccine's coming. We need to start making charts, making steps forward. Opening the schools is the first step to get that done. If the teachers need to get on the priority list to get the vaccine, make it happen. You know, the governor would probably be the first one to say, sure, no problem. And, you know, from my point of view, we need to move forward and not hold these kids back. Let them get into a setting that benefits all of them, not just a few in the hybrid, not just a few with the remote, all the students. That's what we have to address. We have to address all of them. If the parents decide that they don't want to have their child in that type of environment, that's a parental choice. We shouldn't be making it for them. Thank you.
Thanks, James. Elizabeth Richards, you're up.
Thanks, Andy. My name's Elizabeth Richards. I live on Jack's Drive in Pembroke. I have a second grader and a seventh grader. I just wanted to say, you know, I've been attending these meetings for well before COVID for a long time. And it's really surprising to me that anybody could have been listening in for the past two hours at the level of detail that the board has gone into, listening to the teachers, consulting the bus company, talking to our facility staff about how to make this happen, consulting federal documents, consulting school nurses, listening to the state of New Hampshire Department of Health, right? All of these people are in agreement. Six feet of distance is the way to go. And the only argument against that is parents don't like it. But the science is there and the science is clear. And I guess I just want to say thank you for continuing to use facts and reason and science to make your decisions and not to be swayed by people who are angry that they're just not getting what they, what they want. I know that it's really frustrating. Hybrid education has been challenging for our family, so it's not been easy every step of the way. But I do believe that it is the right decision, and I thank you for, for using facts to guide your decisions. Thank you.
Thanks, Elizabeth. We got one more hand. That's Melanie Camello.
Hi, I just wanted to thank the administration for taking so much time over the weekend reviewing the twenty-four-page document. I myself spent way too many hours reviewing it when I probably should have been doing other things. And I just wanted to thank the board for making the decision to at least keep the kids in a hybrid format, keep things as consistency as possible for the kids, because looking at the CDC guidelines, based on our community transmission, it technically does even call for remote learning and canceling sports right now and putting middle school and high school in a remote only, and then the elementary school in a hybrid. So based on those guidelines, it could have been a much worse decision tonight that could have affected a lot of families. And I just thank you for really looking at the guidance and listening to all the recommendations and keeping things as consistent as possible for our families. So thank you for your hard work.
Thanks, Melanie. We had a couple more hands popped up. I think we can get those in before we switch over to phone lines. So next up is Mark Dumont.
Hi, Andy. This is Mark Dumont. I'm on Donna Drive, Pembroke, New Hampshire. Thank you for tapping me. I had a question for you guys. Are we forced to take the recommendations of the CDC? Or can we still take full advantage of the governor's flexibilities? The other thing is I wanted to, I wanted to second what Tammy Boucher had said. I would love to see the seniors get priority. When and if we get to go back to school five full days. I don't think we're doing enough. And I think that I'm hearing one-sided argument tonight, and you guys are still picking and choosing the science. Schools are showing not to be, I don't want to use the word super-spreader, but spreaders, not spreading COVID throughout the communities. You know, there isn't like, I, we're not seeing teachers being affected, infected by children. We're just not seeing it. I think, I think we're going to look at reality and, and realize, because we, we have neighbors, our neighboring towns near us that are, they're, they're open five days a week. What's Hook said, was it Bull? And other schools throughout the state. We really need to get these kids back in school. We're, we're failing the kids. There are kids that are pretty much have lost most of their education this year. Not everyone can do the remote model, and the hybrid's only, only two days a week. I know that they want to offer one more day of remote, and that's great, and they want to get some more kids back in school. You know, maybe on Mondays, but we need to do better. But we need to do better. We need to step up. Thank you.
Thanks, FERC. And the last one we'll do for hands is Megan V.
Hey, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right. My name is Megan Vasconcellis, and I am a resident on Michael Road in Pembroke, New Hampshire. So I just, we have a kindergartner this year. And I just, I guess first wanted to say, I appreciate the school board and the school administration taking into account the CDC guidelines and following the science on all of this. I work in a school district myself, and I know that none of these decisions from any aspect are easy decisions to make. And they are very comprehensive and challenging issues to work through. So thank you for that. And, you know, I also want to say, due to a variety of circumstances in our personal life, our kindergartner happens to be remote this year. It's not the ideal situation for us, but it's just what we needed to do this school year to make the year work for our family. And I will say, anytime that I have inquired, you know, from his teacher, from building administrators, questions about a hybrid model or being in the remote model, they have gotten back to me. They have done everything they can to accommodate any requests or questions. They have had conversations over the phone with me and talked to me through a variety of circumstances. So I just appreciate that the effort that the school administration and teachers are going through to try to meet the needs for all of us, you know, it's like you had said, I don't think that we're ever going to be able to meet everybody's needs or wants at once. But I do see that the effort is certainly there by the school. And then, you know, I, I guess I also wanted to go off of what Amy had mentioned earlier. You know, with respect to the seniors, I, that must be a difficult circumstance, and I can't imagine being in that situation. But on the other end of things, me with a kindergartner, I'm looking in or thinking about next year, and I'm already starting to think about logistically, how are we going to make this happen, right? Like, logistically, this year is just a nightmare, and we're just getting through. And I guess I would love to start hearing plans, not just logistically what next year will look like, and I know that's almost impossible to say right now, but just to start hearing some of those discussions. As well as if we are to be a full in, how are we going to support students at every level coming back into the school building after such tumultuous, you know, year and a half? So I would love to hear more about that moving ahead in the coming school board meetings. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy, you're muted.
Thanks, Patty. I'm going to say all that again. So we'll switch over to the phone lines. If you want to hit star six and unmute yourself, if you've got something you want to contribute, go ahead and do so and state your name, and I will recognize the first name that I hear, and we'll go from there. And we'll give it 30 seconds or so. And I did see, I think Karen's hand go up. Karen, if you change your mind, you want to put that back up, I can come back to you after the phones if we have time. So again, if you're on the phone, star six should unmute you. All right, not seeing anybody on the phones unmute, not hearing anything, and not seeing any further hands. So I think with that, we will move on. Patty, since we took care of the leave request, do we need non-public tonight?
We do not.
Okay, then, agenda number nine is adjournment.
This is April. Make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second.
And we'll meet again March 2nd at 6:30 PM.
March 2nd at 6:30 is correct. So on a roll call vote to adjourn at 8:30 on the nose, April?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes, thank you.
Jean?
Yes.
And I'm yes. Thanks all. Have a great week. And thanks to the community for joining us tonight.
Thanks all.